Alright, good afternoon. I'd like to bring the regular afternoon meeting of Township Aligning Council to order. And the first item is the adoption and receipt of the agenda items. Could I have a motion please? Counsel Ferguson, second there. Counsel Arnison. All those in favor, pose carried. And motion to adopt the regular afternoon council meeting minutes of May the 27th. Motion please. Counsel Whitmarsh, second there. Counsel Arnison, any errors or missions? Seeing none. All those in favor, pose carried. And motion to resolve into special closed meeting for the agenda items and on-table items. Have a motion please. Counsel Kuntz, second there. Counsel Ferguson. Anybody have anything to add? Seeing none. Call the question. All those in favor, pose carried. We now resolve it to closed. The afternoon meeting of Township Aligning Council. And before we move on, I'm just gonna ask council for a motion to add the late delegation which I neglected to do when we opened the meeting. And this is for E2. Poonat Walia, could I have a motion please? Counsel Kuntz, second there. Counsel Arnison. Just a show of hands. All those in favor, pose carried. Thank you for that. And now we'll move on to presentations. We have a presentation regarding the 2019 development cost charges by law from staff. And Mr. Bakken, or should I turn it to you to introduce him?
Thank you, your worship. I'll just introduce staff, your worship, and our consultants. Mr. Anderson is here to provide, I guess, just some introductory comments about the program and introduce our consultants, Urban Systems. Sarah Stevens is here from Urban Systems, and she will go into a lot of the details.
Thank you. Good afternoon, your worship and members of council. The purpose of this presentation is to provide you details of both proposed DCCs in support of a bylaw that is being considered at this council's meeting for three readings. Before the presentation, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank all staff from various departments, stakeholders, and to the consultant team that provided input to create the DCC program. The presentation will be provided by Sarah Stevens from Urban Systems. Urban Systems is considered a leader in the field and has done over seventy DCC bylaw reviews and updates throughout BC. Recently, they've completed a DCC review for the city of Coquitlam, Vancouver, Victoria, and the District of Mission. With that, I'm happy to introduce you to Sarah.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, your worship and council, for having me here today. As Mr. Anderson mentioned, we've been working very closely with township staff on updating your DCC bylaw. So I have a brief presentation for you that will give you some background information, and then, of course, introduce the proposed rates. So here's my outline for my presentation. We'll start with a bit of a DCC's overview. We'll go in very briefly in terms of what types of projects have been included in the DCC program. We'll, of course, look at the proposed rates, talk a bit about how we consulted with the development community on those rates, talk about key considerations that council must look at when they adopt a DCC bylaw, and then we'll end with next steps. So, DCC's overview. So what are DCCs? So DCCs are charges levied on development to help pay for infrastructure and park costs associated with growth. And so why do municipalities have DCCs? Well, there's three really important reasons. The first being that it helps ensure that growth pays for growth. The second is that it really provides certainty for developers. And this is something that we hear again and again from the development community, that it's really important to provide them with certainty for what their costs are going to be. Thirdly, DCCs are a great tool for helping ensure that the costs associated with growth are distributed across development fairly, across multiple developers. So I think it's important to keep in mind that the alternative to DCCs is to negotiate on a case-by-case basis with developers. And for these reasons, that we see that most municipalities that are experiencing any type of growth in British Columbia use DCCs as a cost recovery tool. So here's the basic DCC calculation. You tally up all the capital costs and the park costs associated with growth, and then you divide them by your anticipated growth, and that generates your DCC rate. So one of the things to point out about DCCs is that they're very closely regulated. So the Local Government Act has very strict rules about what can be included in a DCC bylaw and how the DCC rate has to be calculated. The province has even gone a step further, and they've developed a DCC best practices guide, and that has additional details on how the DCC rate has to be calculated. One of the other things to point out is that DCC bylaws need the approval of the inspector of municipalities before they are approved, before they are adopted. And so when we submit this to the ministry, we have to demonstrate that we're both following the legislation and the DCC best practices guide, and we certainly have. So what can DCCs pay for? And again, this is established in the legislation. They can pay for water infrastructure, sanitary infrastructure, drainage infrastructure, and road infrastructure, as well as parks acquisition and park development. The key here, though, is those projects must be needed to service growth. On the flip side, what can DCCs not be used for? And again, this is outlined in the legislation. They can't be used for any local servicing. They can't be used for O&amp;M. They can't be used for works that are needed only for the existing population. Nor can they be used for municipal buildings. So not libraries, not fire halls, not police stations, not rec centers. And then there are a few parts, specific parts, types of improvements that DCCs can also not be used for, artificial turf, sports courts, and lighting. Okay, and so who pays DCCs? And there are a few exceptions here, but in general, anyone who applies for a subdivision would pay a DCC, and anyone who applies for a building permit. I should point out that you do have a separate bylaw that waives DCCs for not-for-profit affordable housing. So why update the bylaw now? Well, it's been since 2012 that you did your last update. That's a bit of time. Since then, costs have been rising, both construction costs and land costs. So you're finding now is that the money that's coming in through DCC revenues really isn't sufficient to pay for the infrastructure and parks that's needed to support growth. We also have new growth information, and this has been confirmed with long-range planning. You're anticipating an extra eighty-four thousand residents over the next twenty-five years, right? And you also have really good new information on infrastructure and parks needs. You've done a lot of work in your neighborhood planning and the associated engineering studies, and you've done a really good job identifying specific projects that are needed to support growth. So with all of this new information available, it really was time to do a major update of your DCC bylaw. So in terms of projects that are included in the DCC program, so here are the types of projects. So it's everything from parks to sewer water pipes, to detention ponds, roads, and pedestrian and cyclist improvements. And these are pretty much the same types of projects that are included in your current bylaw that was done in 2012. So here's how the two programs compare. So your program, really, from 2012, you had about $782 million worth of works. We're now looking at 1.4 billion. It's almost a doubling of the program. Here's a bit more on the comparison from the 2012 update. Population growth, the assumption is pretty much the same, about eighty-four thousand. The DCC recoverable cost, that's what I just showed on the last slide, just about a doubling there. And something called the municipal assist factor. And I've got another slide on that. That's remained the same since 2012. So what is the municipal assist factor? Well, this is the portion that the township is required to chip in of those development costs. And so this requirement is set out in the Local Government Act, as interpreted by the province. The minimum amount that you can chip in at the municipal assist factor is one percent, according to the province. And of course, the higher the municipal assist factor, the lower the DCCs, right? But if you raise your municipal assist factor, you have to fund that out of other means. So that might come out of general revenues or utility fees. And so the setting of the municipal assist factor is very much a council decision. It's entirely at your discretion, okay? But for now, we've kept it at one percent, in keeping with the last bylaw or your current bylaw. And that's what most municipalities do. They choose one percent, the minimum. So your proposed rates. So here are your proposed rates. You'll see increases in residential, eighty-six percent to ninety percent, seventy-five percent for industrial. And I have some comparison charts to show you, but where you land in the region. Here's your commercial and institutional. My apologies, this slide is a bit confusing. The way commercial and institutional are charged, there's a per-square-footage charge for all services except drainage, but then drainage is charged on the lot area. And again, we'll see the changes there, seventy-five to ninety percent for sanitary water and roads and parks, roads, no parks, sorry, and then eighty-one percent on the drainage component. So fairly significant changes. But I think one thing to keep in mind is that these, the bylaw is fairly old. It was 2012. If you look at, you know, if you had updated your bylaw every year for those past number of years, it would really be only about a nine percent increase each year over that time period. And so why have the rates increased? Well, I think, no surprise to anyone, land costs have gone up significantly. We're looking at urban land values that are between two-hundred to forty percent increase over that time period. We're also seeing construction costs that are up by about thirty percent. So one thing to note here is, if we had kept land values at the 2012 values, land costs at the 2012 values, your rates would only go up thirty to forty percent for your residential uses. That's compared to the eighty-six to ninety that we're seeing in the proposed rates. So land has a huge impact on the rates at the end of the day. So here are some comparison charts with some neighboring communities. Single-family comparison, you're there at the top. One thing I do want to point out about the city of Surrey, we talked about the municipal assist factor. You've set it at one percent. Most communities set it at one percent. Surrey actually sets theirs at between five and ten percent. So their council is chipping in more towards development than most other communities in the region. I should also note that on this slide, the orange part of those bars, that's the regional. So that's what's levied by Metro Vancouver for their sanitary sewer system, the regional sanitary sewer system. Townhouse, again, you're at the top. Apartments, the same, at around thirty-one thousand a unit. Commercial comparison, Richmond happens to be just slightly higher than the proposed rate here. Industrial, you're at the top. So when it comes to application of the rates, the Local Government Act provides rate protection for developers. So if you're a developer that has a building permit or a subdivision application in prior to the adoption of this new bylaw, and you get your building permit issued and your subdivision approved within a year of adoption, then you qualify for the old rates. So you would pay the old rates. The same applies for what they call precursor developments. So if you have a development permit application in or a rezoning application in, and that results in a completed or issued building permit within a year of adoption, you too qualify for the old rates. So one of the things that we're required to do by the province is consult with the development community as we put together a DCC bylaw. And so the township met several times with the development community, both the general kind of regular development community meetings that were held, and then a special subcommittee, our Urban Development Institute Subcommittee was struck to actually work more closely with us on the development of this bylaw. The development community is very clear in terms of their feedback. They did not question the need to increase the rates. They fully understood why the rates needed to go up, right? What they did want, however, was for the township to phase in the rates like Surrey had done. So Surrey phased their rates in over three years. And they also wanted more frequent gradual changes, not waiting so long to make an update to the bylaw and see a bigger jump. So the township's response, we considered the phasing in of rates, and unfortunately, that would have a negative impact on your collection of reserves in the phase-in period to the tune of about twelve million dollars. And in terms of more gradual increases, the township, like all municipalities, has the ability to increase their rates by inflationary factor every year for four years without having to go to the inspector of municipalities for approval. And so that is the plan. Once this bylaw is adopted, is to keep up with that CPI inflation for four years.
Sarah, before you move on, can I just ask you to confirm, please, the current Surrey DCC bylaw has a phase-in? As I understood it, it was a previous version that has the phased approach. The current city of Surrey bylaw does not. Am I correct?
Yes, their phase-in ended at the beginning of 2018, so they have a new bylaw now that has no phase-in. Correct. Thank you. So key considerations for council in looking at this bylaw. So the Local Government Act is very specific about ensuring that you look at these three things. So council needs to ask themselves, will these charges deter development? Will these charges discourage construction of reasonably priced housing? And will the charges discourage development designed to result in a low environmental impact? So in considering this, I just wanted to throw up some information here. So we looked at the benchmark price of a single-family home in 2012 when the last update was conducted, and then a single-family home in 2018. So that's the most recent data that we have. And this is from the Fraser Valley Real Estate Board. And it turns out that the DCCs in 2012 were five percent of a benchmark home, and the proposed DCCs today are also five percent of a benchmark price of a single-family home. One of the other things that we always get asked is whether or not DCCs are expected to impact affordability. Do they just get passed on to the homebuyer? The general consensus is that no DCCs, if anything, force down the price that developers are willing to pay for raw land, right? So of course, but if developers, so there is no direct passing on to the consumer. If developers end up providing or bidding on land and it's so low that they actually pull supply back, it may indirectly affect the housing market, and prices would go up if supply is restricted. So in terms of next steps, so this evening, first, second, and third reading of the bylaw. And as I mentioned, the bylaw has to go to the inspector of municipalities for approval. That can take anywhere from one to two months to get that approval, and then the bylaw would come back to you for adoption, hopefully in September. So thank you. That's my presentation.
Thank you. I have some questions from council. Counsel Kuntz.
Hi, thank you for your presentation. I have some questions about the MAF, the municipal assist factor. Why would Surrey be at five or ten percent, and why are we at one percent? And what is the benefit to either the development community or the negative, like what, so I just need a little help understanding the whole MAF idea.
Yes, thank you, through your worship. So the municipal assist factor, as I mentioned, is entirely a discretion of council, and it really is just the amount that you want to help the development community out by. So there must have been some discussion amongst city Surrey council, where they felt that maybe our rates are not where we want them to be, and we want to bring them down. And so we will pull out of general revenues or our utility fees, and we'll help pay some of those growth costs out of other pots of money and not the DCC. Most communities choose a one percent, which is the minimum permitted by the province, because they feel that helps best support the financial sustainability of the municipality.
Would you say that that helped us, Surrey, in, you know, some of their challenges with development, that they had to hire MAF? Or, like, I'm just trying to understand why, you know, if we were to do something like that, I'm just trying to get an understanding of what this MAF is really all about, so?
Yes, thank you, through your worship. You know, without having actually studied Surrey and the impact on their housing market, hard to say. My guess would be that it was more or less, you know, council wanting to send a signal that they were supportive of development. Whether or not it actually encouraged development in their community, I think that'd be very hard to say.
Thank you.
Counsel Whitmarsh.
Yeah, thank you for your presentation today. I had a few questions. The phase-in rate, you talked about Surrey having a phase-in rate or a duration of phase-in. What is sort of a common length of time in which a phase-in is done, if you chose to do a phase-in?
Great, thank you, through your worship. Most communities don't choose a phase-in because they're foregoing DCC revenue. And developers need that DCC revenue to come in as well, because they need infrastructure built and parks, parkland purchased and improved, right? So Surrey's quite unusual in that they chose a phase-in. We don't see that very often at all. They chose a three-year phase-in, and I don't know what the logic was behind that. I'm not sure there was a technical reason for that. It might have been more political. Yeah, not much to add. It's certainly not the case that communities choose to phase in their DCC rates.
Right, okay. I was wondering why, like, when I looked at the charts, and I went by fairly quickly on the, where our current rates are with apartments and residential, and then looked at, you know, these different comparatives. And when I look at them, like, currently, our DCC rates are, you know, in this sample, are near the bottom. We're in the bottom third in this sample. And in just about every one of these slides, the proposed is that we would have the highest DCC rate in just about everyone. I think in one, Richmond was slightly ahead. But I'm wondering if you could just help me understand why the development community would think that we should move from the bottom third to now having the highest DCC rates in the, I guess this is in Metro Vancouver?
Through your worship. So I guess to clarify, we didn't hear from the development community that, please raise the rates. It's that the development community understood why rates had to be raised, right? I think we have to remember that development community is very keen on making sure that infrastructure is available when they need it, and parks are available when they need it. That actually helps their projects. So what we heard very clearly from the development community was, we understand why you need to raise rates. We understand that land has been going up, and construction costs have been going up. We're experiencing that as well. We just ask that you phase them in.
Right, okay. So, but I thought I read in one of your slides or heard you say that the development community was supportive with the suggested rates that you've provided. So it does seem that it's more than just that we need to increase rates. They actually seem to be happy with the actual proposal of rates, the actual, what the rate is. Is that, is that correct, or?
Through your worship, that's not quite correct. They understood the need to increase them and increase to the certain level. They weren't saying, yes, we're totally fine with the high rates. I mean, I think the development community would always want rates to be lower.
Right, okay. But you, your recommendation is that we would move to the highest rates in the Lower Mainland?
Yeah, through your worship. My recommendation is that you collect the money that you need in order to build the infrastructure and acquire the parks and improve the parks that development requires and depends on.
Right, okay. And last question I had was, you talked annual CPI. It was recommended that they would increase by, sorry, the rates would increase by annual CPI for four years. I'm wondering why it's just a four-year period. Why not just increase them by CPI for all time? Just keep going with CPI increases?
Yes, through your worship. So it's a specific authorization by the community charter that allows you to increase them for only four years. And so the community charter puts a limit on that, and you get to do that without going to the inspector of municipalities. You could continue to increase them every year, but you'd have to go to the inspector of municipalities for approval.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel on?
Thanks, your worship. Thanks for your presentation. I had the same question. We often, at the township, like to be in the middle of the pack. We like to lead the train when it's a really positive incentive perhaps, but this is a little troubling. So these figures kind of fell to where they are on this chart, or did we calculate? Was there another calculation perhaps that could put us more in the middle of the pack?
Yes, thank you, through your worship. So I guess a couple of things here. The calculation is done according to the Local Government Act and the best practices. We don't set a target and then kind of back calculate from that, right? We look at your growth. We look at what projects are needed to support that growth, divide one by the other, and out comes the DCC rate. I think I mentioned it in one of the slides. If land values had been held constant at the 2012 rates, you would only see an increase of thirty to forty percent, which would put you easily in the middle of that pack. But of course, we've seen land values go up quite significantly over the last number of years. The only transparent way of the township of Langley bringing down those rates is to increase the municipal assist factor. And again, that would be pulling from general revenues or utility fee revenues and helping support development and offset some of those growth-related costs.
There has been a market adjustment happening in the last six months or so. So how would that factor in? Because these calculations were likely done before that happened.
Yes, through your worship. Absolutely. And so we always recommend that municipalities look at their DCC bylaw, their revenues coming in and their expenditures going out annually. Do a minor update at least every two years, and hopefully a full update five years to take into account changes in the marketplace.
This being such a significant increase, are you recommending against a phase-in? But that's the only thing we've heard from the UDI is at a phase-in. We'll take the fees, but can you help us out in the phase-in? So did you do some more study on what that might cost us? I know you said it's going, we're going to lose revenue, but still in the long run or in the bigger picture, we're gaining quite a bit, too. Is there any consideration of a phase-in that wouldn't cost the twelve million that you mentioned?
Yes, through your worship. I think over the phase-in period, if you're, what essentially happens when you phase in rates, if you do it like Surrey did, right? You are pushing projects beyond your DCC time horizon, right? So this DCC rate is based on the projects we anticipate you are going to need for twenty-five years, so to support growth over the next twenty-five years, okay? And you've got very good studies that back that. What Surrey did was saying, well, okay, we know what we need for twenty-five years. We're just going to push some of those projects off further into the future, and they don't show up in our calculation. When we did our cash flow analysis for the township of Langley, it showed that if you did that over the phase-in period, you'd be out around twelve million dollars. And that does, you know, less money in means you can't deliver on the projects that development needs.
Okay, and then the tricky question, in your professional capacity, do you think this is going to dissuade development, us being the top of the line here?
I think I'd have to keep with the consensus that increase in DCC costs will drive down prices for raw land.
Thank you. Counsel Ferguson?
Yeah, thank, I just want to continue with what you said, if I may. And thank you for coming. Excellent presentation, because it does put facts and figures on the table. But sometimes, facts and figures can be challenged. And so to continue on would drive down the price of land, but at the same token, the DCCs exist regardless. And that means price per unit for the same unit today, once these are implemented, would be different than a year ago or a couple of years ago as well. And regardless of the price of land, it still takes that much more time to, and well, it still takes that much more money to develop. And we would hope that construction costs would go down. We would hope that interest rates would go down. We would hope a number of other things. But if everything remained the same, it would be so much price per unit for who's ever developing that property. And that's the challenge. And the phase-in, we understand, we've talked about it at this table, the development community wanted that. Not only did they want that, but they didn't want such a big hit as well. Now, they're not in front of this. They're not doing a delegation today. That's up to them. But, you know, when you go and knock on doors at people that develop or people that are in business, they say it's going to affect their bottom line. And not just because of Langley Township, but because of Metro Vancouver and Translink and some of these other charges that folks in the development and business community are faced with. So, you know, I guess it all comes down to the end user. When things go up, if the price of a candy bar costs more, you know, you pay more for it, and it goes right across the line. But I did want to point out to you, and if you look at your chart, and anybody looking from home and might be a bit bored, they don't have to look at the figures. You look at Coquitlam, Surrey, Richmond, all, and you have Burnaby here, our friends in Burnaby, but all of those communities have casinos. And to date, the city of Coquitlam has raised over one hundred million dollars in casino revenues. And we have to provide police, fire, roads, the same thing, and they're getting a bonus, like a bonus, because they don't have to provide any more service. It's just like some, well, some people say there's illegal money. It can't be possible. But anyway, the thing is, people might say, how is that possible? Where's the fairness? So those folks listening, or those folks in the development business, have to understand that we're competing against communities that have millions and millions and millions of dollars given to them where we don't have that amount of money. And it's when folks come to Langley, that's the challenge. And I think the development community knows that, but there's not much they can do. They have to still sell the same house. So you don't have Burnaby on the map, which is one of the, I would think, richest communities in the whole country, with revenues, with reserves, with casino revenues, with tree, what do they? tree, what do they call, trans, TransLink lanes, the sky trains running through them. They're, you know, they're a fortunate community to be where they are right now. And when people develop on, on transit line, they can sell for more money. So anyway, it's, I certainly appreciate your, your presentation today. I know we, Langley Township has to move forward, but it, we've certainly got some challenges.
Counsel Woodard?
Yeah, thanks again. We're, we're really going to have to find Counsel Ferguson a casino somewhere here in the township of Langley. Definitely, maybe you can help us with that at some point. So thanks again. Were you were involved in the process from the beginning with staff and then the consultation with the development community? I sort of inferred that from the report, but I just want you to confirm that. So, so you heard firsthand the feedback that development community gave us and that, that informed the bylaw?
Yes, through your worship.
Okay, okay. So I wanted to say that, you know, are, are the township, so I appreciate that we don't necessarily like the perception of being at the top of the list, but is it the case that, that our rates are too high or that the other municipalities' rates are too low?
Through your worship, very good question. I think the case is that communities are different. So even though we put up the comparison charts, it's still kind of an apples to oranges comparison. So for instance, what you're not seeing here on those comparison charts is that the city of Surrey negotiates NCP, so Neighborhood Concept Plan, CACs that don't show up, up here, right? And so for instance, Burnaby doesn't show up on this list because they don't really levy DCCs. Well, what do they do? They negotiate on a case-by-case basis, right? What you can be assured of is that all of those communities are following the same set of rules when they put their DCC rates together.
So that leads me to my next question, where I was going. So in regards to the fact that are we seeing higher rates and we should be, we should be accepting these higher rates, given, even though the comparable may, may make us a bit uneasy, because we're more of a greenfield community than some of the others? And we do have a lot of infrastructure to build through the DCC program that maybe these other communities don't have and therefore their rates would be lower.
Through your worship, yes. As communities kind of mature over time and they're making more efficient use of the infrastructure, we actually expect DCCs to come down. You're still in an expansion kind of mode. You've done a lot of good work on your neighborhood planning and so we have, we had really good data that fed into this rate. So we're very confident these are the projects that you need to support growth.
Yeah, so looking at the colors, the two biggest ones for us are roads and parks, the two most expensive elements that we don't have in a greenfield growing community. So if Counsel Long wants to move to reduce the amount of park acquisition, I would certainly not support that. Would be happy to see him do that. Because I think that of course we need these, these facilities and have to get them through development. And I want to point out to my council colleagues that it is roads and parks that are driving most of these higher rates. And it's good to hear that maybe as the community matures, they would, they would level out a little bit and that other communities are doing things a little bit differently. One of the things that concerned me a bit from the report though, was that I read that the, and correct me if my perception is wrong, that the development computing, development community lobbied out specific projects in our rural areas. Is that true?
Through your worship. What happened is, is we went through with the first cut of the rates and we were looking at 100, 110% increase on the residential rates. And the development community, and rightly so, they asked, hey, can you take a, you know, sharpen your pencil in terms of what's actually needed here? And so we looked at the transportation program in particular and went through with a very fine-tooth comb, okay, really what's reasonable within this 25-year time horizon? And then we were able to push some projects off without risking development happening and they don't have the infrastructure needed to service them.
So the concern I have with that is that are we, are we, should we be doing that? And then in the sense of, of say, because I think when UDI was here, they mentioned that they were, you know, we were at 110% and they were, they got it down to 80%, you know, rough numbers here and there, plus or minus. And so, you know, do we remove rural projects that then when, maybe when development is, is nearing its completion in its first round in, in our major areas, that maybe we come back in 20, 25 years and maybe we don't have the volume of development we need to then pay for those projects when they cost twice what they're going to cost now in terms of land and construction? Just twice or three times, whatever they're going to cost in 25 years? Should we be allowing the development community to do that?
Through your worship, yeah. Good point. I mean, DCCs work best when you plan for the future and you collect and you save money up and then you expend it quite a ways into the future. So that's why we always recommend, again, keep track of your revenues in, your expenditures out, update your bylaw at least a minor update every two years. And in that minor update, you would be pulling projects in onto the program and deleting ones that you've been, that you've completed. So you should still be giving yourselves easily 20 years to collect needed DCC revenues.
Yeah, and then it's up to me, I guess, to go and dig into the project list and try to figure out what was removed. And I don't really think that that's necessary. I mean, I'm looking at the fact that we're doing a pretty significant increase, we're at the top of the list here. Maybe it was appropriate to, to have them decreased a tad and maybe in the next review in three to four years, we could look at that again and, and see what those projects were that were deferred and maybe bringing them back into the program at that time. I had a couple of questions. 30% construction, that, that seemed like a low increase from 2012 based upon just anecdotal evidence.
Through your worship, that's the information we got from staff and that comes from recent tenders and actual costs coming in to the township.
Okay, that's, that answers that. The CPI inflation for four years, now, I didn't see that in the bylaw, so it doesn't need to be in the bylaw. Our staff can bring back a CPI-based increase to the bylaw and it can, we can adopt it. It doesn't go to the province, but we don't have to put that in the bylaw. Is that correct?
Through your worship. So it has to be done by bylaw. You just don't have to send it to the inspector of municipalities for.
I didn't, maybe I missed it, but when I read the draft bylaw, I didn't see it in the bylaw.
No, through your worship. So the province requires you to adopt next year a new bylaw that would have an increase add on your 2% to 3% that would represent the CPI and you could give one, two, three readings.
Yeah, so that's, so it doesn't have to be embedded in the actual bylaw. We can do that process and we don't, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So that's great, so thanks. So again, I, I want to, I appreciate the review. It was definitely really interesting to see all the projects that were in there and the costs that go into it. And, and I know that it's a bit jarring, but I'm, I'm appreciative that, that developers here have had a pretty good deal over, I think, the last seven years since our last update. I mean, the DCC rates they were paying two years ago, for example, versus what they were paying in 2012 was a pretty good deal. And I think we have to go to a catch-up here and so I'm, I think it's appropriate to see us at the top. Thank you.
Thank you. That exhausts the speaker's list. I'd like to make a few comments and a lot of good comments from counsel. And I think just leading off, what Counsel Woodward said, I think we should get a big thank you from the development community because they haven't been raised over the last seven years or so. And, and, you know, it's time that they have to go up. And then looking at the chart here, the timing is important. I'm looking at Abbessford, a fairly similar community to what we are. Their DCCs in 2010. You know, last time they updated, it was slightly lower than ours were in 2012. So I think they might be a little wake-up call over there fairly soon and they have to do their up, update. Communities like Langley City, again, the established road network, they're not having to go build new roads and a lot of infrastructure is in place. So, and looking at some of the other cities, they're in a similar position where a lot of the infrastructure is there, whereas here, we're building it out. That's, and you've mentioned that and certainly want to highlight that part. So when you look at our DCCs, of course, they're today, they're going to be the, you know, we are going to be the, we're just renewing, we're just renewing it and some municipalities are lagging. The timing is off. Once their timing catches up, I would assume they're going to be up there with us. And, and again, some of them have infrastructure that's in place already that certainly makes a difference. So as you mentioned, it's, it's apples and oranges. Each, each community has its own challenges and I certainly support this. I also, the CPI question, it does, isn't in the bylaw, but would that be something we put in policy? And, and so that municipality, as municipality like us, we'd have it in policy that every year we would increase it by the CPI and after five years, we'd have a, a review of our entire DCC. Is that, has that been done in other municipalities? Not necessarily in the bylaw, but we need a policy. What's your suggestion on that?
Your worship, it has to be done by bylaw, executed by bylaw, but certainly communities could adopt a policy that says, we're going to commit to increasing it by the CPI over those four years.
Okay, so that's helpful. I think that might assist in this future councils that this doesn't fall off, that there's a policy in place that this is reviewed annually on the CPI and then maybe we determine how many years we need to do a full review like this to, to do the catch-up. And so I do appreciate that. I think it covers my, my comments. A lot of good questions from council and thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, no, we'll, we'll take it in, in order. So we're going to go on to delegations. The first delegation is Jerry Holmes. I have, he's here, please come forward. Oh, just, just hold on, just hold on half a sec.
My name is Jerry Holmes. I live at 22189 26th Avenue and I live across from the property 222060 26th Avenue that is a subject property for the infilling. I have two issues. One, the main one is drainage. The area's been a drainage nightmare now for, over the 10 years that I've been there. Every year during the rainy season, the water comes off the property, goes across the road and under the road. And soon as it freezes, we have a skating rink that we have to drive up to, let off your foot on the gas, glide over it and then carry on. And then at the, after winter, the potholes start showing up because the road's being washed underneath because it's not a regular, it's a paved road for the first few hundred feet, then it's what they call a chip seal where it's just, just grindings over a substandard base. So we're getting it washed out and we get potholes every year. Now, if some, if that could be fixed, which would probably require a drainage ditch along the entire area, because the drainage ditch now is on the north side of the road. So the property had, water coming off the property on the south side has nowhere to go except go across the road or under it to get to the other drainage ditch. And this has been a problem for, well, probably 10, 20 years. If that could be solved, that would be the, the main issue, my problem. And the other one is being the road substandard to bring 400, 350, 400 truckloads of soil along that area would just absolutely devastate the road. There, I sent you two aerial photographs that show that the entrance to the property off 224th is wide and allows trucks to come in. And the other one would show on the property, the two routes that they could take fill if the drainage issue was addressed. And then that would protect the road also. My neighbor here, John, John Swain and Jeff.
Micah.
Micah. John here has been there the longest. John will come and tell you about the drainage.
Thank you for hearing me. I too am a little concerned. I, excuse me.
Excuse me. The way the process works is he's applied to be a delegation, the council's approved his delegation. So, so, you know, if council allows, he's got two minutes left, so you can fill in the two minutes.
Two minutes, okay. I'll be quick.
If council's okay with that, then we'll allow that.
I've been there for 24 years and again, as Jerry said, drainage is a big problem because this problem, this property has no ditch on the south side of that road and it's only a one-car road. And these areas that they want to fill is actually they're retaining ponds, okay? And, and they're three feet below the road. They also have higher areas on that same 30 acres, which are four to five feet above the road. Now, if they want it leveled, they could easily level that. But when they fill in those swales, the water has nowhere to go but make it even morsel in the winter to flow across the road, which it does. It's, it's been a big headache. And again, being concerned, nobody likes to see four or 500 trucks on a one lone, one-lane road. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Counsel Long had a question for the first.
I'm just wondering, thanks, Your Worship. If I can get the, the addresses, is that possible? We can get the address?
Sure. Just the, your address again? Yep.
22265 26th Avenue.
Okay.
And, and Mr. Holmes?
The other gentleman, the address? Your, your address?
Your address.
No, no, the one who spoke.
Oh, just one, just one quick thing. The road is not a full width road, so we couldn't pass. If trucks came along there, you can't pass them.
Road, okay. Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, so now we'll move on to the next delegation and this is Punit Walia. Okay, yeah, please provide your name and address.
Yeah, the address is 2238464 Ave. My name is Punit Walia. In front of, good evening, Honorable Mayor Jackfroze and council members. My name is Punit Walia. I'm standing before you in representation for Navneet and Tijinder Walia regarding our application. My family bought this property in 2003 in hopes of retiring here and doing some farming in their later years. In 2016, we took our first steps in clearing trees in efforts of planting new ones in their place as a farming project for the future. After clearing majority of the land, we realized the property was very wet and brought in help and counsel from Madron Environmental Services. Now, I believe all of you should have a package in front of you. And this is a support letter from the archeologist that did the report. There is a extensive business plan that was also attached, but this is a summary and pretty much it summarizes the whole report. The recommendation was 1,400 single truckloads of soil to level the land and make it functional for the farm use. Although the results of our petition was 58%, I hope the councils and mayors see the difficulty to use this land in its current state and exercise their rights with section 9.3, which provides the option to refer the application to the ALC if council considers that there reasons which would mirror a departure from the general level of support rule. The main thing that I would like you guys to look at is photos one and two in the handout. It, it pretty much shows that the level of the land is a lot lower where the farming project will be held. Also, in, if we refer to the conclusion, the second paragraph, it states the proposed 10,000 cubic meters soil will be spread to approximately a maximum depth of .8 meters and an average of .6. So that pretty much shows the, the height difference from the road and the rest of the property. So drainage is very difficult on that property. Thank you. If you have any questions.
Thank you. I don't, just to have a quick question. This is the natural state of the land or has soil been removed in the past or was it pushed to, you know, has there been some disturbance of the soil?
So we have cut down eight acres of trees before we started this process, so it left huge holes in the ground.
Okay.
It was done in 2016.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. No questions, thanks. All right. Okay, so that completes the delegations and we move on to reports to council. And the F1 is the 2018 audited consolidated financial statements. And could I have a motion to receive and consider the 2018 audited consolidated financial statements? And the representatives from KPMG are, are in attendance, I understand. Maybe they can just wait. Oh, in the back, there's a representative, thank you very much, if council has any questions. So it's been moved by Counsel Ferguson. Is there a second or Counsel Arneson? Any questions or discussion? Always have to ask one. Is there anything we need to be aware of?
Excellent. Thank you. That's what we need to hear.
All right, I'm going to call a question. All of it. And it carries unanimously. And we move on to F2, this is the solicitor's application for property at 2238464 Avenue. If I could have a motion, please?
I'll move.
This is now a motion to not refer or to refer?
I'll move to what it says here.
To not, you move in the recommendation?
Yes.
Okay, so it's moved, moved by Counsel Davis and seconded by Counsel Richter. Any discussion? Counsel Long?
Well, this is going to be interesting and a challenge, I think, both this one and the, and the next one, both delegations that we've heard too. And I guess what I see from this one, which we just had the presentation on, that most of the neighbors are, are not opposed to it and there doesn't appear to be a danger of flooding to the neighbors.[1754.33] to the neighbors. Um, I'm not an expert in, uh, on how you grow cedar trees, but I guess they don't really grow in a swamp, which is, which is what the picture looked like. So I guess, Your Worship, I'm having a difficult time supporting the, what's been put forward because, um, I think that we have a, a, some kind of latitude to, to approve it as long as there isn't a huge amount of neighbors that are opposed. And I know we've been through a couple of petitions here, and we've changed some of the guidelines and so forth. I, I would say if it was less than fifty percent, I would definitely, uh, likely support the recommendations put forward, but I'm wondering if, uh, what the procedure would be then, Your Worship, if this passes. Well, that's the way it is. If it doesn't pass, then I guess the alternate could be proposed.
That's right. If it doesn't pass, then the alternative could be proposed, and then we would, um...
Well, I think based upon the delegation and the, and looking at the map, which were not, which is not in the public, uh, meeting, but we did, we do know what properties voted which way. Most of the neighbors seem to be in support of this.
Thank you. Counselor Richter?
Well, we've already adjusted the policy to bring it down from one-point-six kilometers to one kilometer, and from eighty percent neighbor approval to sixty-seven percent neighbor approval. Neither threshold was met, or well, the sixty-seven percent threshold was not met the first or the second time. So I really don't understand the need for us to go any further with this. We should at least let the new policy be in place for a while longer, get a bit of a track record. That was the purpose of changing the policy. And just as a point, uh, when I hear that eight acres of trees were cut down, of course you're gonna have drainage problems. You cut down eight acres of trees. So I'm not in support of referring this.
Q. Counselor Ferguson?
Well, yeah, I think that, uh, following with, I, I was hoping, we have had a, a delegation. I was hoping there might have been more discussion, but I understand that we're discussing it now. That, you know, I would think that, uh, it might be better to listen to what the ALR has to say, and, uh, the person wants to farm, uh, they wanna, they did talk to the neighbors, they did go through a process. Uh, mind you, you know, whether they, there was trees on all parts of the, um, the acre, acreage which was, uh, cut, I don't know, or whether there's blackberries. There's a lot of blackberries and a lot of other soil, I don't know. You didn't really say, and we didn't ask, uh, and we don't have an arborist report or something like that, but I know that there's an awful lot of scrub brush on, uh, rural properties, including my own. Anyway, um, but I'm gonna get busy, get my wife out there, start clearing some of those blackberries. But, uh,
You're supposed to clear it.
I think, I'm going to, yeah, right. I'm going to not, I'm gonna be voting against this. I'm gonna be, um, suggesting that if it does get defeated, refer it to the ALR because let them make a decision on whether it's, uh, doable or not, and, because they're very good at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Arneson?
Thank you, Worship. Um, through Your Worship to staff, I just want to comment, actually. So Counselor Richter succinctly put out the situation that we've had two petitions now, both have failed, the second one by a smaller margin. And I'm challenged just because we've put a policy in place that obviously had a rationale for why we needed to do that, and, and we've lowered the number now. And I guess my concern, uh, through Your Worship to staff, is the degree to which, if we just send them along anyways to see what's gonna happen, then won't we just be inviting people who failed their petition to, in, you know, do an entreaty to us to say, well, just send it and let them decide? Because then I don't see the relevance of having any policy at all if we're not following that. Um, and secondarily, um, I know it says we have discretion to, to do that based on some kind of decision that we feel is, is relevant to the overall, um, request. And so I'm wondering if staff has any further, uh, information that they could provide about that, or if it's just something, it's one of those things, we have to decide yes or no.
Mr. Backen? It's more of a policy issue than a...
Thank you, Your Worship. It, the discretion with council is to actually approve or reject any application. The policy really serves as a guideline for the public to know when there is a, a line that's crossed that generally speaking, council would support. As such, council could, even though a level of support is reached, deny an application, or if, if a level of support is not reached, they could actually endorse the application to go to the ALC for final decision. Uh, I, I guess in this context, the best way to view it is really that of a guideline. It is true that we would like to make sure that, um, that we're not, I guess, creating precedents that are going to mean that there's a, a vast number of applications that would arise before us simply because of that variance, but I think some comfort can be taken on the fact that council weighs each application on its own merits, including the information from the neighbors that makes the decision based on those merits, not on a, a, a dogmatic principle.
Thank, thank you. Counselor Davis?
Yes, thank you. I, I just would, just looking under imported soils, um, the cedar trees, um, I talked to a, a agronomist that doesn't live too far from the area here. He had pointed out that he didn't know if Madron Environment Services, um, was from the area because, um, cedar tree hedging grow is natural to this specific area. So when you import a bunch of soil, you're now gonna grow cedar trees. Um, if you grow cedar trees in the soil that's there already, I think that would be your best bet for, um, for success to grow a cedar tree farm. Um, I know that, um, uh, I don't know, I've seen a couple gravel trucks parked in the, in the, on this piece of property, and I, well, I guess that would be a, a good thing for them, to bring home soil. They're in the business of, of doing that. But I, I, I would, I'm gonna support not sending this. Um, one, it's, we've, are, just because we put a new policy in, doesn't mean that, um, um, that it's going to be, uh, be, um, like, it didn't pass, so, um, and I, like I say, it, cedar trees are native to this area on six, in that area, so to bring in imported soils, um, because you've got a bunch of dump trucks, I don't know if that's such a reason to have a fill site. Thank you very much.
Q. Counselor Ferguson?
Well, yeah, I guess, you, you, I've got cedar trees too. You can't grow them in the, in the lake. Um, so obviously there's some low, low, low areas there, that's one. Um, I appreciate all the discussion and, you know, whatever happens in the end. I do wanna point out that even though we have a policy, and Mr. Backen says every application should look, uh, should be looked at on its own merits. I believe these folks have been diligent. They've come back again. We've asked them to come back, and they've provided a agrologist report. There's three signatures, Jessica Stewart and Jeremy, I can't quite see it, no, Sinikens, and Gordon Butt, and...
You can't, you can't put names on, you can't disclose any names.
Okay, well, I can't. It was in the report, anyway, so that I'm looking, reading. Anyway, so what I'm seeing, what I'm seeing here today is an opportunity for us to proceed based on their diligence, and we're looking at it on, on merits, as, uh, Mr. Backen and others have indicated, that council can look independently on every application and decide accordingly. And I think the reason why I would like to see them move forward, because I think they've been diligent and they've been, provided all the necessary documentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Richter?
Well, I'd like to go back to what Counselor Arneson said about having a policy. If we're gonna look at everything on, as a case-by-case basis, why even bother with the policy? Staff, uh, put a lot of work into petitioning not once but twice. That was a cost for the township, and now we're ignoring the results of that petitioning. Like, why would we spend money on something like that if we're not gonna listen to the results? Doesn't make sense to me.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, I'll just make my comments. Uh, I'm not gonna support this either. I, I, um, I hear the concerns of policy, but council, um, certainly has the right to, um, to, to look at this and, and consider, have other considerations when they make their, their determination. The, um, policy, as Mr. Backen said, is there as a guideline, and council, over the years, all councils have had, have, um, reviewed, um, reports, and, and they may be contrary to policy, but the policy is there as a guideline. And I appreciate the staff and putting in their recommendation because they've looked at the, the policy, and the policy said sixty-seven percent. This is slightly lower. But I also, um, uh, read the report, understand that this family is looking to, um, to use this property for agriculture, and it is an agriculture zone, and, and I know this council quite often supports agriculture and wants to see agriculture flourish in the township. And in fact, we are looking at how we can get small acreages productive, and, uh, this family is seeking to do that. But they hired, uh, professionals to, to, um, review it, to come up with a farm plan, um, to come up with a soil deposit proposal that, you know, if we, uh, if this is, uh, defeated, there's nothing wrong with council, independent or individual council members making those decisions. That's what we're here for. And, uh, so I'm not gonna support this, and I would support it going to the Agricultural Land Commission. So I think the, you know, I like to see the farmland being farmed. So, um, those are my comments, and Counselor Long has a second time.
Didn't mean to steal you the last word, but we are a farming community. We should be supporting farming. We talk about trees at this table all the time, and these guys wanna grow trees.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm gonna call the question on F-two. And the motion fails with, uh, Counselor Ferguson, Counselor Whitmarsh, Counselor Kunst, Mayor Fros, Counselor Long opposed. So I entertain a motion to refer this soil deposit application. Moved by Counselor Whitmarsh. Is there a second there?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Kunst. I'm gonna call the question on referring this to Agricultural Land Commission. And that carries with, um, Counselor Richter, Counselor Woodward, Counselor Arneson, Counselor Davis opposed. Move on to F-three. This is soil deposit application for property at two-two-two-six-zero-twenty-sixth Avenue. Uh, could I have a motion, please?
I move to get referred, and I'd like to speak to it.
Okay. Okay, so moving, referred to staff?
No, to the, uh...
Oh, sorry. We're moving to refer to soil, yeah, sorry. I missed that. Take out the word, not. Moved by Counselor Long, seconded by Counselor Ferguson. Counselor Long?
Okay, now this one, uh, it appears is a, a real concern of the neighbors, so I'm wondering if there would be, uh, a condition put in here that a ditch has to be provided on the, on the side of the road that's gonna prevent the, the drainage, because that's the, that's the concern we heard here. Um, so again, improving farmland is something we should be encouraging, but how can, how can we make sure that that, uh, the conditions on the road aren't worsened by the, uh, by the fill? Can they be required to put a ditch in?
Mr. Seffier, the, um, drainage concerns that the delegation raised, uh, what, uh, what can we do to insist that those are mitigated?
Your Worship, I'll provide some, some, uh, I guess, high-level comments, preliminary comments, and then, uh, look to staff if they wish to add, uh, add more. We have, we have members of staff, Mr. Zwag, Mr. Welfeng, Mr. Isaac, both, all, all three of them here. Uh, generally speaking, drainage is not, Your Worship, with all respect to the delegates and, and Council Long for, for suggesting this, is not as easy as putting a ditch in because it has other consequences, and it has to be looked at more holistically from the catchment perspective and see, see what implications might be. Uh, Mr. Welfeng? Anything to add? You don't have to. Okay, please.
Yeah, so with, with regards to drainage of the site itself, um, this is something that we often work with applicants on a very, uh, detailed basis. Typically, after this stage in, in the process, we would work with them on a drainage plan. Uh, this concern in particular is not limited to this, this road itself within the township of Lanley. We do have a number of roads where they were built as a half-road standard with a ditch on the, on the far side of the road. Uh, so I do appreciate the, the concerns that were brought forward today, although this is not, uh, what I would say, a unique situation in and of itself. Um, so one of the options that we could potentially consider is trying to work with the applicant on this. Uh, we'd have to take a look at, at, at where the grading would go to see if there is any possibility of redirecting this water. But again, that's something we would have to look at, at a more detailed level, um, uh, once we have more detail on the application itself.
So that, and that's something that's done in every, in every case, like you do have to come up with a, before they can bring soil, and they have to have a proper drainage plan and not to impact neighboring properties, not to impact our infrastructure. Is that correct? This can't proceed without a proper plan. Is that correct?
That would be correct. It, we would be potentially constrained by the, by the limitations of the topography of the site, so we would have to review, uh, where we would have municipal facilities that the drainage could be directed towards.
Your Worship, could this be referred then to staff to solve that and then come back to us?
I don't have any reason why not. I'm just seconding.
Not asking you, I'm asking the mayor. Yeah, I'm gonna check with Mr. Backen because, uh, at, at this stage, there are, there are still, there's still another stage where they would have to come back with that, and if, and if, uh, I think it might be better to let the proponent know which way we're going before they spend all that money, but Mr. Backen?
Actually, that's correct, Your Worship. The challenge we face is this may go to the ALC and be denied if it's, if the motion carries. If it's approved, they would have to come back then, and we'd have to look at it in the context of a soil deposit permit and a regulatory bylaws. So at that point, we can get into more detail.
Yeah. So, uh, so I don't think, uh, I'm kinda gathering from staff that to come up with that information, they'd have to have more detail planned, and then the proponent still doesn't know if it's gonna get approved, but, you know, it wouldn't get approved if they don't meet our environmental concerns and drainage concerns. Is that correct? Yeah, thanks.
But I wanted to, just before you take my mic away, could we not make a mention of that? Because now we have discussed that there's a drainage concern unlike the other application. So can that be noted somewhere so that, uh, that we can make sure that these concerns are addressed?
Make a amendment that if, if this soil deposit application is approved by Agricultural Land Commission, that a detailed drainage plan, um, be provided to the township of Lanley.
I would, I would just be careful, Your Worship. I think you simply wanna say that a drainage plan be prepared in accordance with our soil deposit, uh, regulatory scheme or soil deposit bylaws.
Okay, so that's an amendment? You don't make that amendment? Okay, so the amendment's moved by Counselor Long. Is there a second or to the amendment? Counselor Ferguson, so I'll open up amendment. So it's just the amendment that if this is, um, uh, accepted by the Agricultural Land Commission, that, uh, a drainage plan, or, forget the wording there. I think everybody gets it. I'm gonna call the question on the amendment.
[inaudible]
No. No, not at this point. And it carries, Counselor Arneson, Counselor Davis opposed. We're back to the main motion as amended. Uh, Counselor Richter, next speaker?
Um, yes, uh, through you to Mr. Backen. The, uh, uh, delegations raised concern with regards to access, uh, being limited to the property off two-twenty-fourth Street. Is that something that needs to be put in at this stage, or is that something that would come back at a later date?
To Welfeng, I think it'd come back at a later date, would it not, with the soil deposit application?
Yes. So with regards to access to a property as part of any, any permit issuance, that's something that is, gets discussed. Um, usually it's, it's a site that is, is the safest spot for trucks to enter and exit the site. Uh, so things that would be looked into there would be the site distance available and, and proximity, um, to adjacent intersections or trees or hills and things of that nature. So, um, that, that is something that we often work with the applicant, and it's not typically a requirement, uh, that council imposes, um, although I suppose it, it could be if, if that is the, if that is the wish of council, so.
Well, I would like to make a requirement that access for the trucks be provided off and on from two-twenty-fourth Street, not twenty-sixth Avenue. I'd make that amendment.
Okay. Is there a second to that amendment?
No second.
It's been seconded by Counselor Woodward. I'm gonna open up the discussion on the amendment. Any discussion seen on, oh, sorry, Counselor Davis, on the amendment?
On the amendment?
Yes, it's on, uh, truck access to be limited to two-twenty-fourth.
Truck access. I, I, I'm, um, still trying to figure out exactly where the majority of the fill is going, because I can't read the numbers on the, does any, uh, through you, uh, the access, it, like, um, the, um, uh, the delegation gave us two pieces, and there's a yellow road, and I'm assuming is that the road that they will follow to get into the fill site? I don't know. So then I look at our information, and it doesn't actually show me. Well, maybe I'm not, can't see it, but I, I'd like to know, because if the fill is going in in the back in this low spot, yeah, okay.
Miss, so the ac, what is the access, um, anticipated to be from, uh, what has the proponent told us? With the access becoming, is it on two-twenty-fourth?
Yeah, we have not had discussions with the proponent about the specifics on the access, so, um, yeah, I, I don't have any information from the proponent at this point.
But just a question to staff. Two-twenty-fourth is reasonable access. It's, it's, uh, thorough. I haven't driven down there lately, so.
You, you're saying twenty-fourth?
Twenty-four.
Okay, 'cause, because if we, if we grant access on a half a road, the trucks could wreck a bit of the road, uh, even, even a point of access, and who's gonna pay for that? But a half a road sometime, I call it NDP blacktop, and you get a whole bunch of big trucks going in there. I, so to answer this, this, we're voting on the amendment, and we don't even know where the trucks are going in, so that's kind of bothering me. And then, and then to throw that in, I don't know where they would put, there's three-hundred-and-seventy loads?
Your Worship, perhaps we should go back to basics because we're designing an application that has not yet been approved. Uh, that's the challenge. Those are very good comments, but remember, this goes off to the land commission. If the land commission says yes, then it comes back to us to actually work out the details. The applicant's been, has been helpful in indicating they intend to come off two-twenty-fourth, which is fine. That's a, probably an arterial. Um, but, uh, there may be other implications as to where in two-twenty-fourth that comes from. That's dealt with at the more detailed stage.
Two-twenty-fourth is a main, it looks to me like it's not a half road. It's, it's a full, it's a full road coming through.
Not a half road, no. It's a full road, two-twenty-fourth.
That would make the most sense. Okay. Okay, uh, so on the, on the amendment, call a question.
Okay, can I just clarify? We're, like...
Sure.
I just, I don't, I don't wanna vote for it because it's, we're, I think... I just, I don't want to vote for it because it's, I think we're putting the baby before the bathwater, or whatever the...
It's an amendment, so you don't, it's up to you to vote.
Yeah, well, okay. So what, can I read the amendment again?
Can we have the amendment read back, Ms. Bauer?
Effectively, it said access be offered to 224th Street, not 26th Avenue.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I'm calling a question on the amendment. It carries with Counsel Ferguson, Counsel Whitmarsh opposed. So the main motion as amended. Counsel Davis, you're on the speakers list. Do you wish to speak?
Well, I still don't know, dude, I just don't have a magnifying glass to find out exactly where the majority of the 300 and, is it 370 loads? I don't know where the 370 loads are going. Are they going to the back of the property?
Mr. Welfing?
Yeah, so the best page to look at is actually in the back of Appendix B in the technical report that was submitted by Madrone Environmental. I have it as page 30 of their report. Unfortunately, you probably have a different page number in your package. But it is approximately, I would say, one-third of the way if you're going from the east towards the west and just north of the old track or riding ring that was, that's noted in the aerial photography.
Okay, because...
I drew the lines back too far.
Yeah. Okay, so that's where the 270, 300, that's where the fill's going in, right there. Yeah. It's, okay. I just, now I can see where I, see where it's going. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Richter?
Yeah, I'm glad that the amendment went through with regards to 224th, but I'm not going to support this for the same reasons as the last one. We amended our policy from 1.6-kilometer radius to 1-kilometer, from an 80% approval rate of neighbors to 67% approval rate of neighbors. This amendment hasn't even been in place for a year yet, and they did not meet the threshold. On the first one, they only got 61%, and the second one, they only got 55%. So I don't understand why we are spending taxpayers' dollars to run these petitions if we're not going to live with the results of the petition. So I'm not supporting this referral.
Counsel Woodward?
Yeah, I just want to add that if we have a majority of council that's going to be sort of changing or sending on applications to, maybe in this case, in a few minutes here, that didn't meet the threshold of the policy, that we change the policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any further discussion? Seeing that, I'll call a question on F3 to refer, this is, so if you don't want it to go to ALC, you vote in the negative. So this is to refer the soil deposit application to the Agricultural Land Commission and direct the staff to process the application further. So if... So if, no, but the motion, so the motion, if you're, if you're in, the motion was made with the word "not" taken out of the recommendation. So if you don't want it to go, say no. Okay. Makes it actually simpler. Okay. And it carries with Counsel Richter, Counsel Woodward, Counsel Arneson, Counsel Davis opposed. Move on to F4. This is Willoughby Community Park completion funding requirement, and that council approved deferral of selected capital projects previously approved as 2019 budget process is outlined in this report to the 2020 budget process in order to fund 1.8-something million dollars. Could I have a motion to get this on the floor? Counsel Whitmarsh, and seconded by Counsel Arneson. And I'd ask staff to just give a little brief background on this prior to discussion from council.
Thank you, your worship. I guess I'd qualify it by saying this is not an elimination of projects, but simply a deferral because of some budget constraints that arose. In this year's budget, we anticipated revenue coming from a third party. That was a bit ambitious, I suppose, in terms of all parties attempting to actually put in a facility that would be funded by a developer that would actually be having a playing field on top of it. Despite the diligent efforts of many parties, the timeline to achieve that was not successful. And in order to meet some of the requirements for use of that facility later this fall and in the spring, it's necessary then to proceed. As such, what we've done is we've reprioritized some of the projects that are out there. Again, these, what we've done is we prioritize them in the context that we didn't get the money we thought. So we've simply taken the money that we did have and reprioritized it as if we did not get the funding. And as a consequence, it's before you that we transfer the money and proceed with the projects that we think had the higher priorities.
Thank you. Counsel Richter?
Yeah, I'm really disappointed in this because we're not even two years into the new budget, and we're already taking 1.8 million out. And I'm really upset with some of the projects that are being put off in order to make up this 1.8-million shortfall. So things like Trails, the Walnut Grove Skate Park, or the George Ross improvements. So I just don't think this is right. I think we should be, if we're deferring anything, we should be deferring this one and getting on with the other projects. So I'm not going to support it.
Thank you. Counsel Long?
Yeah, this one is a real shame, and I'm wondering if there couldn't be a happy medium here somewhere, okay? Borrowing the whole amount is expensive, but could we not maybe delay the last one, which is the Yorkson Community Park, and borrow, say, 600,000 to get the other ones done? Right? I mean, there isn't a cost in the report on how much, there's a cost to borrow the 1.8, but there isn't a cost associated with borrowing the 600,000. Because it'd be a shame to put all of these ones off. But I could see probably putting maybe the largest one, which is the Yorkson Community Park, which is 1.2 or something like that. So what would that look like, your worship? Could we borrow enough to keep everything going and just put off the Yorkson Community Park one for a short time?
So, your worship, it's, the total for the Yorkson Community Park is about 1.4. The way the numbers are derived, we only, we had only taken 1.2 of that, as was referenced. So that leaves a $600,000 shortfall. The funds could be borrowed, however, given that amount, if council has any qualms about the projects that are being deferred, it would be more appropriate, I think, simply to say that these projects need to proceed. So staff, please determine other projects that we could actually use. We could take council's advice as to the priorities of the projects, if you will, and then look for other projects to defer. Again, this is a deferral, not an elimination. The deferral would be for automatic inclusion in the 2019 budget, 2020 budget.
Right, so we're only deferring it, I mean, it's already June, six months into the next budget, and so we're deferring it a year, basically, six months a year.
But, your worship, some of these, I like lighting here for the skateboard park. I mean, if we defer it past winter, that means the winter's going to be all dark for them. There's some trail work being done in South Langley. I mean, all of these projects are really...
They're all good projects.
They affect a lot of people. So I mean, I would see, we're in a bind, defer one, not seven. So if I could make, well, let's hear what council say, but I think that's the way we could go.
Let's hear what council says. This is... Counsel Woodward?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask again. So first of all, I'm actually going to start with another comment. First of all, I mean, the deal didn't work out, trying to use land efficiently, trying to get a developer in a pretty interesting deal to put their detention under a playing field and pay for a playing field. So the fact that it didn't work out, you know, whatever the reasons and whether the personality involved is an issue or not, you know, in the end, I want to, I want to at least say thanks for trying to make a pretty good deal, and then in the end, and that I wouldn't want to have any frustration that we're experiencing right now to mitigate the attempt to make those kinds of good deals in the future. What I didn't really know is, like, so the complete shortfall, though, is actually 3.6, not the 1.8. Is that correct?
Correct.
Correct. So we're looking at 1.8 shortfall this year and trying to find the other 1.8 next year, effectively?
Effectively correct.
Yeah. Okay, so I'm wondering, like, is it necessary for the Parks Department to feel the entire pain of this, or can we potentially spread it around a bit? Like, I'm back to my dump trucks again. You know, these real, these million-dollar dump trucks, maybe we can postpone these million-dollar dump trucks and spread some of this pain around, $500,000 wash base and so on. So maybe if some of those haven't been contracted and awarded, ideally, I guess it would be Parks budget versus someone else's budget, maybe, but maybe there is some creativity there to try to spread this around a bit and not necessarily cancel 3 million or 1.8 million of Parks projects.
That's effectively correct. What we try to do is keep within the apportionments for each of the divisions, but if council in their deliberations feels that it's more appropriate to find funds elsewhere, it would be a simple direction to staff to effectively look for a certain amount from other sources beyond the Parks budget.
Okay, so then I had another question, following up on that being theoretically possible. So on the draft annual report, you know, I noticed millions in reserves, some of them statutory, but some of them maybe discretionary. Is it possible to internally borrow the 1.8 from a reserve and then sort this out at the next budget process and proceed with the minimum necessary Willoughby, but not postpone these other projects? And again, figure it out in the fall.
That can be done, although a suggestion would be if it's not the full 1.8, for example, $600,000 was suggested, it might be appropriate to use surplus for $600,000, but it'd be challenging to use surplus for 1.8 million. That would likely require some internal borrowing from other reserves.
Yeah, so I mean, is that really a big downside to internally borrow the 1.8 to ensure that Willoughby contractual obligations, it sounded like there were some termine commitments that we made and other things?
It's not a huge issue. Something means we have to make sure there's some provision for repayment, and Ms. Sinclair can perhaps to comment on if there's any pitfalls that we have to be aware of.
Through you, worship, to Counsel Woodward, the pitfall will be just the lack of funds in the, when we get to the budget process. So it's, that's it. It definitely can be done. We could set up an amortization table that it could be paid back, look like a loan from the outside. It's just 600,000, that's used.
Maybe I can just interject, just a quick question. Are we, then, is there a way to, like, pre-approve next year's budget for this to make sure it gets paid? Is that in effect what we're doing if we pass this? Sorry, just wanted to...
It's our understanding, in effect, that's what we're doing because these projects were already approved this year. So if you will, they effectively become carryforwards, although we'll have to take the money from them as part of the 220 budget, so we won't be using the 219.
Yeah, maybe I'll just start with the objective, then. Maybe that would be helpful, rather than suggest solutions at the beginning. So ideally, we would find 1.8 from somewhere and not cancel the projects listed and complete the minimum we need to do at Willoughby right now, this summer. That would be the ideal scenario. And is there 1.8 in a combination of interior reserves that we have that money now? We know it's going to go back either in over two budgets or one budget, and we figure it out in the fall. Meanwhile, we're not canceling projects, and we're not going out to the bond market and borrowing money. We'll just deal with it internally and sort it out in six months. Is that a possibility we could look at?
I believe it is. I think the short answer is you're suggesting that we proceed with the funding of 1.8 million by effectively borrowing it from internal reserves and actually refund or be paying for that from capital allocations in the 220 budget year.
Yeah, or see what prior year surplus looks like in the fall. Maybe a combination comes from prior year surplus and then some other, some other projects that are on the list that were not funded last budget would have to wait another budget. We could look at it from that point of view as well, and then try to find the full 3.6 in part of the budget process later this year, but not, not get into this trying to figure out which community gets their project and which doesn't after they've already been approved effectively. I think I don't really want to go down that road. Also, I did pull the capital project for the 3.6 million out of the Parks budget, and it did say funded by others. And so I made the assumption that that money was in hand or contractually committed. So if this situation is occurring again in the future, that we have a non-binding commitment for the funding, that that could be highlighted as part of the budget process so that we're at least aware that there's some risk of this happening as opposed to it coming up mid-year?
That's a good point.
Could we do that next time? Thank you very much.
Yes.
Counsel Whitmarsh?
Yes, thank you. Good conversation on here. I'm just had a few questions through your worship to staff on these projects. The first question was around the venue seating for this premier field, and this report is suggesting that we would postpone the venue seating and some other projects, which is approximately 1.8 million dollars. Is there, what, what is the significance of this venue seating, and how long could we realistically delay the venue seating? Or is there a specific sort of events coming up in which this venue seating is going to be required in short order?
Your worship, the venue seating is for the, I guess, the field structure itself. It'll provide more than our traditional amount of seating. It would be, again, it was something that it would be very, what was recommended, and would be something we'd seek to have, but if funding's not there, the field itself is more important. And I think what we're suggesting is that we have to find a way to achieve getting the field built because we can always revisit the actual stands at a later date because they'd likely be portable in nature.
Right, so we don't have a commitment to an event that's going to require these, this venue seating shortly?
I would say we have commitments to events that will require seating, but I think we can find a way to manage that seating. It may not be the most comfortable seating, but I think we can find some ways to try to achieve it unless we're advised to find another solution such as internally borrow the 3.6 million, not the 1.8 million.
Okay, and another question. The seven projects that were set aside are suggested in here for deferral, and they were up, obviously compared up against finishing this premier field. Just wondered if there's some comments through to staff just about the ranking of the field ahead of these seven projects and how these seven were identified to be moved because the field needed to be moved ahead. Was it such that the field is seen as the primary or most important project on the list, and therefore, could, others could be bumped?
I'd phrase it this way, if there had been no other funding sought in terms of our ranking system, which goes through health and safety, community need, input from user groups and whatnot, the field would have came out ahead in terms of those things, not necessarily all the ancillary items, but the field itself would have came out ahead. That's why the recommendation came to put these over these other projects. It's not to say these other projects aren't important, it's simply a ranking that we go through with every budget process.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I've still got two more speakers, and we'll entertain, like, it'd be an amendment to this if we wanted to. This has already been moved, so we need amendment. So perhaps the next two speakers can think about that, that we'll be doing amendment to perhaps take this out of reserves and fund it in the 2020 year. So Counsel Ferguson?
Oh, yeah, I think that was one of my questions about, you know, we've got a number of projects here, and there's, seems to be a will from at least the last few speakers that have spoken to talk about moving forward with some of these projects and making a decision on others and putting them back. And, yeah, we'll look forward to that discussion and moving forward, I guess, with commitments we've already made. But I did, one last quick question, and we're all frustrated a bit by the unfortunate movement. What gets us in the way of a non-binding versus a binding contract, if I may, as was mentioned earlier on?
The challenge, I suppose the question is, why was a binding contract not entered into earlier? It's because there were certain conditions that had to be met by the developer for this to actually proceed, and a timeline was chosen that was thought to be able to meet those timelines. Our fallback position was simply that if the developer had not been there to fund it, we'd fund it internally, that is, from our budget process in any event. So there was no real risk to us. It was a matter of the worst-case situation happening that we'd have to use the funds that we hoped not to use in the first place. The developer, I don't believe, to be fair, was in a position to enter into a binding agreement until there was certain works done as to the benefiting area, you know what that would look like, and it appears that the benefiting area did not see the benefits of this and therefore did not concur.
Well, I imagine that those will be worked out. But as I say, I look forward to these Parks projects, which again are very important.
And Counsel Kunst?
Yeah, it goes to the developer. Is he going to actually eventually do this project, and can we actually get this money later on and put it towards that? Or is it done and it's not going to happen?
This project would then have the field built over the area, which is going to contain the storage, I guess, storage infrastructure. So they'll now have to go to another location, acquire the land, and build the infrastructure there. So it's a, it's a cost to the developer as well. Ultimately, it's just not occurring now, which I think is probably part of the challenge they were facing.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So there's a couple of options we can do. We can vote on this and turn it down and come up with an alternative motion, or we can just have a motion to postpone indefinitely, which basically states that it's a motion to decline or to take a position on a pending main motion. So Ms. Bauer, just got some direction from you because it sounds like we want to go a different direction. But I think the amendment is too far removed from what we have on the floor, so.
Your worship, it may be because what we're really, or it may not be. See, we're simply taking the potential use of projects that are budgeted or other funds that are budgeted and trying to reallocate them. So one option would be to refer the fact that not prefer that have a motion that council approve use of reserves and internal borrowing in order to fund the 1.8 million for completion of the playing field in Willoughby Park and that council approve the transfer budget authority of said funds in the amount of 1.8 million to complete the final playing field at Willoughby Park.
Okay, so just to keep it clean because that's so much different. I'm just gonna ask for a motion to postpone indefinitely this motion that's on the floor and then we'll entertain. It's in our, it's in our procedural bylaw. I'm just taking from a procedural bylaw. This, I'm the chair and this is what I'm suggesting that we do, that we postpone indefinitely, which basically takes it off, does the same thing. So I'll move that if I can have a secondary. We'll just do show of hands. Seconded by Council Woodward, show of hands to postpone indefinitely. All those in favor? Opposed? Council Richter's opposed. Carries. Now we can take another motion and Mr. Backen.
I'll take Council Backen's motion.
Council Backen had a motion there that I think satisfies our needs. Council Long moved. Can you hear it, can we hear it again, please?
Certainly, your worship. It's that council approved use of reserves and internal borrowing in order to fund the 1.85 million for completion of the final playing field in the Willoughby Community Park and that council approved the transfer of budget authority and the use of said funds in the amount of $1,850,000 in order to complete the final playing field in Willoughby Community Park.
Okay, seconded by Council Woodward. Further discussion on that? Council Davis?
Is there any more down the pike like this? While we have the two, we have F5 and F6 coming up, but I guess it's a little different. But is there any more that you can foresee that are in the backburners that are going to be coming to council to, for this purpose?
I think your question is, are there other conditional funding matters out there that could be awarded prior to proceeding? And the short answer is highly unlikely unless they're immersion situations. I think this is a bit of a unique situation because of the benefit and the situation that we were facing. This is just an unfortunate failure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council Whitmarsh?
Yeah, just a question to staff through your worship. I'm just wondering if there's any sense of how much of this 1.8 could be covered possibly through this year's surplus so that we would, it seems that way we'd have less of a pre-commitment to the next budget year.
That's something we'll look at, your worship, at this early in the year. We're only looking at numbers from the first quarter, so it's really too early to tell what the surplus is gonna look like at this point.
So I guess I'm wondering if then, if we got to the point near the, later in the year or near the end of the year and we found that we could cover most of it or all of it through this year's surplus, would that be better and therefore not pre-committing money from another, next year's budget?
That's correct. What I was trying to say was that we could look at surplus now, which is a bit of a guess. We can look at internal reserves. We know what they are. But by year end, we can actually determine that we'll use the surplus to repay the internal reserves to have it advanced if those funds are available.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna call the question on the new F4. It carries with Council Richter opposed. Now we're reaching the end. There is a motion on, reaching the end of our time. There's a motion J2 that has a bearing on this evening's special meeting. So, Mr. Backen, we could adjourn till after the regular evening meeting, which would be prior to the special meeting and then we could deal with this, or should we deal with this now?
It'd probably be helpful for the audience, your worship, depending on the debate to deal with J2 now because it does frame the, things will be happening much later in the evening. There is still a chance, an opportunity later in the evening, but it would be nice to get it tidied up.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. So, yeah, sure. Council Woodward?
Yeah, I would also like to try, I mean, I know it's a bit atypical, but try to deal with F7. We have members of the audience that specifically came here for F7. We may not have time and maybe you'll link the item, but.
Okay, so I need a motion then. We can go after the evening meeting, which will take us before the public input, which we can deal with everything because we're running out of time. So I think what we'll do is we'll ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting till after the regular evening meeting. Council Davis moves it. Seconded by Council Woodward. All those, any, all those in favor? All those carried. Okay, all in favor? Okay, thanks. Okay, so, yeah.